Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Kuschmerich, Counselor Bean,
I'm here tonight.
Counselor Boishman.
Yeah.
Counselor Beazall.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Yeah.
Counselor Dean Atali. Counselor Donnelly.
Yeah.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Joseph.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Tryon called will be absent.
Public forum, anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the Agenda being due so for not more than two minutes, if you're addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number and the agenda which you're addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Ms. Bernhard, good evening.
Sharon Bernard, Director of the Public Library, live at 70 Sawmill Pond Road in Pittsburgh. I'm speaking to 2268-17, and it's the approval for expenditure funds from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, Customer Experience and a Digital Age Grant. It's for $10,000, and the grant actually began October 1st. I didn't realize this had to come to the council, so we end up next September 30th, so I'd like to be able to get this approved tonight so we can actually get things moving to expend some of the money.
Second.
I have a motion and second to suspend the rules on 268-17. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the matter is before you.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 268-17. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in the public forum at this time? Seeing none, if there are no objections, I'll now hear a report from the Appointments Committee, Counselor Bean.
Mr. President, the Appointments Committee met tonight, had one appointment before them, the appointment of Todd Pickett for the Animal Control Officer and Animal Inspection Services, and that was unanimously approved by the committee.
Motion to accept the Appointments Committee report.
Second. I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it's unanimous. Committee on Records, I apologize.
Why not introduce Mr. Pickett?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Counselor Joseph. We have Mr. Pickett here in the audience this evening, if you could kindly stand to be recognized. Congratulations.[137.13][137.13](APPLAUSE). Thank you in advance for your service to the city, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Joseph.
Sorry.
We'll now hear a report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order. Parents are deceiving.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries. Communications from his honor, the mayor, two appointment letters this evening, one for Mr. Kenneth Boujold as a member of the Pittsburgh Council on Aging for a term to expire November 1st, 2020, and another for Mr. William Walsh as a member of the Pittsburgh Council on Aging for a term to expire November 1st, 2020. I have a motion and second to send both letters to the Appointments Committee. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries. And then two other communications this evening, one for the Pension Reserves Investment Management Board, and the second from Sally Craigan, Director of Positive regarding appointment of Mr. Todd Pickett for...
Second.
I have a motion and second to place both communications on file at the City Clerk's Office. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? All those opposed, it's unanimous. First order of business this evening is a special presentation regarding DPW stormwater budget. Joining us this evening, we have Nicholas Erickson and Commissioner Lenny Laxo. Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you. The DPW budget for fiscal year 18 included about $388,000 for stormwater, and that was in anticipation of the new MS4 permit from EPA that was supposed to take effect on July 1st of 2017. And as you might know, on June 29th, EPA delayed the new permit after the council had passed the budget, but two days before the permit was supposed to take effect. And they delayed it in response to a request by the City of Lowell and the Town of Franklin, as well as the Mass Coalition for Water Resources stewardship for a one-year delay pending judicial review of the permit. And EPA wants to use that year to explore the use of alternative dispute resolution and determine if any changes are appropriate to the MS4 stormwater permit. So since then, the DPW Stormwater Committee has been meeting to determine whether we should change how the stormwater appropriation is spent, and we've reviewed this with the mayor, and so in the interest of transparency, he asked that we, you know, inform the council on what we're planning. There are certain expenses that are not necessary while the new permit is delayed, and it would be not prudent to spend money on items that might change. On the other hand, it makes sense to continue with items associated with the old permit that is still in effect, and to invest in capital items such as capital equipment, such as equipment and drainage repairs that the city will need to fund anyway. So our civil engineer, Nick Erickson, who's been following all the stormwater issues, has compiled a list that you should have in front of you, and he can discuss this in more detail.
Yep. So if everyone wants to take a look at the handout that I passed around, Table 1 breaks down the approved stormwater budget items in DPW's fiscal year 18 budget. So we had appropriated $388,540 for the new MS4 permit and stormwater program that would meet those requirements. So in Table 2, I've kind of broken down costs associated with some of the items that we've discussed and decided to move forward with. There are some permit-related items that we're going to continue with, some addressing current permit requirements, others are designed to get ahead and be ready for when the new permit becomes effective next July. Then there's, as Lenny mentioned, there's a few other items in the other column, such as the replacement of a vacuum truck, which is used to clean out catch basins and such, that we'd like to spend the money on. Right now, we have a Vector truck that's in excess of 20 years old. It's in the shop more than is actually used on the streets, so that's basically the biggest big-ticket item that's part of the budget. That's a cost of $200,000 for a used machine, probably like five, 10 years old or so, but that will replace a piece of equipment that badly needs to be replaced. And then at the very bottom of Table 2, you'll see a list of capital improvement projects. These are projects throughout the city that, like Lenny said, need to be done, and I think it makes sense to use this money to accomplish some of these projects since they're stormwater-related. A few we have going right now, one is an improvement on Beach Street. We had a washout last week during the heavy rains, so we'll be doing a project up there, and we'd like to use some of the money from this stormwater budget towards materials for this project. So as you can see, the permit-related items and the other items total up to leave an excess, a remainder of about $75,000, and we were planning to take that $75,000 and apply it to these capital improvement projects. It's obviously not enough to cover everything there, so we'll cover what we can and supplement the rest with the current DPW budget outside of the stormwater line items.
With regards to the replacement of the Vector truck, do we sell or auction off the existing equipment, or do we hold on to that and operate to whenever that's possible?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the options are to either, you know, use it as a backup. As Nick said, it's usually down whether it's available for use, or, you know, we could auction it off as scrap. I don't think it's really worth a whole lot other than scrap.
And we only have one through the city, is that correct?
Wastewater also owns a similar machine that's about, I don't know, 12 years old or something like that.
Correct. All right, thank you. Counselor Green.
Thank you for this breakdown. The $30,000 for city ordinance review and update, is that for legal services?
So that's for a consultant to review our current stormwater ordinances. That's a requirement of the existing MS4 permit and the new permit, so we need to review those ordinances to make sure that they line up with the MS4 permit that's going to hit next year. It's kind of a long process. Obviously, we'll have to meet with the consultant, go through our current ordinances, then we'll have to come up with proposed changes, come to city council and all that. So the goal with this is to be ready for next year when the permit does hit, so that we can check that box next to that permit requirement.
All right, and then again, the line item where it says, "Develop operating and maintenance procedures for parks, municipal facilities, infrastructure," do we, is that, I mean, do we not already have those type of procedures in place, or is it new to meet the new proposal?
We do have those procedures in place. What the EPA is looking for is us to compile them and consolidate them into one document that we submit to them with our annual reports. So we need to go through all of our records and find these O&amp;M plans that have been done, compile any ones that haven't been done, and put them all together and kind of package them neatly so that we can give them to the EPA.
Is that done in department, or is that part of the consulting fee?
That's going to be done by our own staff, so any of the items listed here that don't have a value associated with them, it's assumed that that's going to be done by one of the DPW engineering staff. We're already there, you know, 40 hours a week, so I didn't include a cost for that per se. It's just our normal time that we'd be spending at work anyways.
All right, so this $31,000 and change would be additional hours that would be needed to review the procedures that are already in place?
So the $31,040, is that the one that you're referring to? So that's for the developing map of the entire stormwater system?
Oh, I'm sorry, even with glasses, I can't read.
So with that, the mapping that is going to be required, and the level of detail that's going to be required, is a little bit in excess of our staff's capabilities. I mean, there's just so much to do that we're going to need to seek some outside help. So the $31,000 is split between utilizing wastewater's GIS engineer, so basically compensating wastewater and the enterprise fund for his time, and then also roughly $15,000 for an intern. So we'd be hiring an intern to do, or assist with a lot of that mapping.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
Is somebody looking at the outfalls? I mean, is that part of this process? And when we're talking, when we first got this, I mean, we seemed to have a ridiculous amount of outfalls that we have to monitor. Is somebody looking at whether all of those outfalls are necessary, and how we would combine them or eliminate them, or the things that we need to do to reduce this amount that we would have to do on a yearly basis for monitoring them?
Yes, so as part of the mapping process, we're required to go to all those outfalls, find them if we can't find them. In a lot of cases, they're buried or forgotten or overgrown. And as part of the mapping process, we'll kind of review the system, try to identify areas that need to be, you know, fixed or improved or upgraded, and areas where we can do, like you say, and maybe reduce the number of outfalls we have, eliminate ones that aren't necessary anymore, combine ones that make sense to be combined.
Seems like our sewer separation projects and things like that should have eliminated the need for some of these outfalls because we're doing it right instead of doing it wrong. So it's, we should be able to figure out ways of eliminating these outfalls because we're doing our sewer separation properly and just divert that water that's going to the outfall to the normal sewer system, the water system, so that we don't have to have the outfalls that we used to have.
Well, the sewer separation projects are designed to remove the sewer outfalls that are within our system.
Right, separate the...
Right, so eliminate the discharge of any of the raw sewage through any of those sewer outfalls. But what you do in that process is you create a new drainage system that was formerly using the sanitary sewer system. So when you do that, you're actually creating more outfalls, unfortunately for us, because you're creating a new stormwater system in a new area, and as a result, you need to send that water somewhere, and that's the outfall. That's what discharges to a stream or river.
Okay.
Counselor Caddy.
Lenny, last year, I think it was last year, the BEP gave you guidelines where you have to sweep the streets before a certain date.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Did, oh my head shut off, sorry. Did, um, does it help with the catch basins, you know, the vacuum truck? Did it help where all the sand and soap was going into those storm drains? Did that help you actually in the springtime? Yeah, I mean, we're now required to, we will be required to sweep the streets twice per year, once before June and then again before winter. So the purpose of the spring sweeping is to get all the sand off the street that we lay down during the winter and keep that out of the catch basins, and we're not allowed to let the catch basins get more than half-full anymore, according to the new permit. And then in the fall, the idea is to get the leaves off the street because they don't want the phosphates or the phosphorus from the decaying leaves to get into the river. More than once, I had people ask me or tell me how ridiculous it was that we were getting the street sweepers out there, and then we'd have another storm, and I was trying to explain to them with the reason, the reason why we're doing it. But maybe a little more public knowledge relations on, you know, why we're doing the things we're doing, so that we don't get, the city doesn't get ridiculed over it.
Yeah, it's definitely a good idea, and it's part of the new permit and part of the old permit, actually. There's a public education and outreach requirement, so that's definitely something that we're looking into and we're going to be doing in the future, you know, whether it's Facebook posts or website updates or, you know, all that stuff, something that we're going to try to do more of.
Good, good, thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
You guys are going to be buying a vacuum truck to pick up the leaves, besides using the sweepers? And I know they make limits to this, they drive down the side of the road, and you get a hole, and you suck it all up and grinds it up, you can hold more, you don't have to dump it as much.
Yeah, so the...
Like a Billy goat, it gives you a Billy goat, but it's a big truck that goes out and sucks up the leaves.
So this, the Vector truck, it's basically what you described, it's got a big tube coming off and comes down, so you open up the catch basin, you kind of stick the tube down, and it sucks up all the debris that's in the catch basins?
No, no, I'm talking about in the fall, when the leaves are all in the gutter.
Oh, okay.
And then we get a heavy rainstorm like we did the other day, and it's blocking up all the drains, you're going to use one of those kind of trucks to come and ride the gutter and to pick up the leaves before they go into the drains.
Unfortunately, we don't have one of those pieces of equipment. If we did, we could use it. What we have is just the typical street sweepers that you see with the rotating brushes. I think we have four of those right now?
Three.
Three, and they're in a kind of a rotating cycle, so every two years, we try to replace one of those. I'm not sure how much the piece of equipment that you're talking about costs, I'm guessing probably similar to the Vector truck that we're looking at, but, you know, maybe that's something we can look at in the future.
I would think it would be a lot faster. I mean, if you're looking at time and energy, you just drive around and sucks up everything instead of having the sweepers, and then you're going to dump it, come back, and you just drive around and it sucks it all up, like a vacuum cleaner.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that, instead of buying a new sweeper in the future, kind of rotating one of those into our cycle.
Just come and see us, what the mayor will give you the money to.[1055.01][1055.01](LAUGHING).
I'm sure you're quoting him directly on that. Are there any further questions from counselors? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
256-17, Annual Report, Auditor's Report, June 30th, 2017.
Will we waive the reading unless we have time?
We have all night, Counselor Bean.
I'll place it in the City Clerk's Office for the public to view.
I have a motion and second to place the 256-17 Annual Report from the auditor on file in the City Clerk's Office. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Joseph.
May I ask that that be sent to Finance for a finance review?
Absolutely, we can do so. So I have a motion and second to place it on file in the Clerk's Office and send to Finance for review. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries. Planning Board, Meeting of October 10th, 2017. Counselor Paul Boishman, do request that the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals do not hold their meetings on a Tuesday. This would allow city counselors who meet every Tuesday, either at Finance Committee or a regular city council meeting, to attend. This was not granted by the Planning Board, it's awaiting report from the ZBA Chair, and the Planning Board cited that they've moved their meetings from the third Tuesday of each month to the second Tuesday of each month, as to not conflict with city council, and in hopes that more city counselors attend. Since they made that change earlier this year, they cited that there's been very few city counselors in attendance.
Who will give the petition to withdraw?
Second.
I have a motion and second to give 195-17 leave to withdraw. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman.
Speaking to the motion, before we withdraw, let me explain the reason why I put this in. I honestly feel that the reason why I put this in is we're taking democracy away from the people, and where we're having a meeting on a Tuesday night, and the Planning Board has their meeting, even a financial meeting, that if you want to attend the financial meeting, you can't be at the financial meeting and then be at the Planning Board meeting at the same time if you've got two important issues. I have a prime example, which come when farms, I wanted to fight the curb cuts. I missed the meeting because I had to be here, so I couldn't fight the curb cuts on Electric Avenue, it's 23 curb cuts, so, and I just feel that democracy, we're taking democracy away from the people by having everything on a Tuesday night, whether it be a financial meeting, an account of meeting, that people can't go to both if they want to fight both issues. If there's an issue here, and there's an issue here, and that's why, but I understand we want to withdraw because the planning can't move their meeting, because I went to that meeting.
Counselor Boishman, I'd also add, you know, your point is well taken, and I think ideally, you know, we have a single city hall with multiple meeting rooms, and members of the public can move from, you know, one meeting to the next, and, you know, they can be here for one issue and then move to another meeting. And, you know, certainly, that's my hope, is that in several years' time, we have such a facility that would allow the public, you know, for multiple public meetings to be held at once, and members of the public to circulate in and out. We certainly don't have the facilities at this time to be able to accommodate that, but I think ideally, that would be something that we're more able to accommodate in the future, so that people don't necessarily have to choose between one or the other, they can do both.
But the only thing bad thing about that, Mr. President...
Counselor Boishman, you are recognized.
Yeah, oh, okay, thank you. The only thing bad about that, Mr. President, is this, is that you're still taking, if you gave a speech, and I'm not there when you gave your speech, but I gave mine, I can't come back with a rebuttal to show that you're absolutely wrong, all that person can't, because he's going right back to his other meeting. So you're not really scoping for democracy out to its fullest limit. You're only hearing one side, and then you're gone. So when this person talks, you hear his side, he may have a good idea, but I can show you why it's no good. That's the only thing I'm saying. I appreciate it, and I'm sorry for interrupting you.
No problem, Counselor Boishman. Yeah, I would just also say, you know, we shouldn't, we can't get in the business of legislating how each of our boards and commissions hold their meetings. We need them to be able to operate within a certain level of flexibility that accommodates their members as well as members of the public. And, you know, I think as we have situations where there could be contentious meetings between two bodies, you know, I think we always have the ability to speak to the chair of each individual committee or commission and ask them to either hold a topic, to move to another meeting, or to try to schedule differently. So I think as, you know, if we ever need to accommodate such a, you know, a large public topic that might, that might conflict, I think we have that ability. I think our chairs are generally amenable to trying to work with us, but at the same time, you know, we need to give them the flexibility to operate with what's most effective for their body. Counselor Joseph?
My question, I guess, is whether or not, if, are we giving this leave to withdraw, or are we just accepting the Planning Board's report?
I made a motion to give leave to withdraw.
But I think what they're asking for here is to accept the Planning Board's report, not act on the petition in the council. So I don't care.
I think either would be appropriate in this situation, they accomplished the same thing. So I have a motion and second to give leave to withdraw to 195-17. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition.
President, let's make a motion that orders 257-17 through and including 270-17 excluding 268-17 be sent to Finance.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 257-17 up to and including 270-17 excluding 268-17 be sent to Finance. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, carries. Orders other, 271-17 ordered that authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to accept the donation of a conservation restriction on certain parcel of land in Westminster known as Chernak Property as outlined in the enclosed order. 272-17 ordered that authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to purchase a conservation...
Will we move the suspension rules on 271-17?
For one or both?
Oh, do them both, I definitely do them both that separately, or...
We'll do them separately, thank you, Counselor Bean. I have a motion and second, suspension of the rules on 271-17. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, 271 is before you.
Will the order be adopted?
Second. I have a motion and second to adopt 271-17. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question, I mean, I don't know if anyone here would know what the Sharnot property is. Is there a better legal description than if we go to Westminster? How many people are going to know what that particular property is? I mean, if they're old and you're familiar with the community, perhaps it is, but is there a better legal, a better way for us, or anybody in Pittsburgh or Westminster, to know?
Counselor, so certainly in our packet, we have the layout of the land and the GIS coordinates. Are you referring just simply to listing this publicly in the future?
Technology, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Donnelly, that's a good point. I think, you know, perhaps there is a, there's a way of at least indicating generally where within a community these may, these may reside, whether it be west or east Westminster, so forth and so on. So I'd be happy to relay that communication, so that in the future, we can take that under advisement.
I certainly support it.
Speaking to the motion, Counselor Green.
My question on the, on these two properties, are we accepting the conservation restriction because it has to do with our water source?
Yes.
That's why the conservation restriction is in place?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion and second to adopt 271-17. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries.
272 be given the suspension of the rules?
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 272-17. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is before you.
Will the order be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt 272-17. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries. Ordinances, 250-17.
Will it be referred to its final reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second to refer 250-17 to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. 251-17, an ordinance three, Counselor Bean, you want to spare me here? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Move your final reading for the ordinance that's going to allow three one-hour parking on Day Street.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 251-17 to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries. 252-17, an ordinance...
Will the ordinance require an always-stop sign on North Street, Central Street? Will you give the final reading?
I have a motion and second to send 252-17 to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman.
On the motion, just to let everybody know, I'm not really in favor of all stop signs everywhere. I think, as I mentioned before, I thought if you hit a button, a light comes up and says red, it stops, everybody can cross, like I seen in some other communities. For us to be headed towards smart growth, this is not smart growth thinking. What we're doing is causing pollution, we're causing backups as we proceed. I think next time, if we look at these four-way corners that we're going to put stop signs in, we ought to look at the fact that hitting a button, the light turns red, and the people can cross the street, and then it goes, and the cars can keep on moving, instead of backing up people for miles because of a crosswalk, and they want people to stop all the time. I just think we're wasting a lot of time and energy in pollution we're causing, where we keep the traffic moving. I've seen in other communities where people have got to cross, they hit the button, the light comes on, it turns red, and they walk. As soon as they're across, it turns back, they've got so many seconds. I'm going to pass this, don't get me wrong, but I think we should just look at the possibility of that, instead of having people stop. I thought it would be a better idea than having people stop.
Counselor Boishman, I think your concerns were certainly taken under advisement, and that's why, you know, Pittsburgh State University partnered with an engineering firm to take that's why, you know, Fitchburg State University partnered with an engineering firm to take a look at exactly that, the best method of ensuring both pedestrian safety and traffic flow. And it was determined that that was the best method, was a four-way stop, not a lighted intersection. So, you know, I think we each have our opinions on, you know, what's most convenient for the pedestrian versus the motor vehicle operator. But at the end of the day, I think we have to, you know, trust our traffic safety engineers that put forth these proposals. And in this case, that was determined to be the most safe and accommodating of motor vehicle traffic. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Donnelly.
Just to respond to Counsel Boishman, this is not a light, it's just a stop sign.
No, I understand that.
I wasn't here when it was being heard. I wasn't in favor, but I did some homework after and found out the engineers have come up with it, and it may be the first four-way stop sign that's been engineered in Fitchburg. So it's a beginning. We did try it a few years ago. Counsel Caddy initiated a couple. They didn't work out too well. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to send 25217 to its third and final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Mr. President, I move that the ordinance 27317 making Chestnut Street a one-way street be moved to its first reading and advertised.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 27317 to its first reading. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. 27417, an ordinance section 181 356. The Fitchburg zoning ordinance shall be amended by striking the current section 181 356, including all sub-paragraphs in its entirety, and inserting in its place a new section 181 356 as follows, in that doing so shall further the purpose of the city's zoning ordinances as set forth in section 18111.
Will it be referred to its first reading and advertised?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 27417 to its first reading and advertise. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Petitions.
Motion to send 275 up to and including 282 to their committees.
Could we hold on 28117?
Which, which letter number?
27917.
I'd like to ask for 27917 to be withheld from that and...
281.
And 281. So I have a motion and second to send 27517 up to and including 28217 withholding 279 and 281. Speaking to, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Counselors, 27917, our city solicitor just expressed a concern and wasn't, isn't yet ready to accommodate such a petition, is asking for us to give it leave to withdraw.
Second.
I have a motion and second to give leave to withdraw to 27917. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 28117, Counsel Joel Caddy, do install proper signage showing that two lanes of traffic can turn onto Main Street headed towards River Street. The recommendation was to send to the Public Safety Committee.
I just want to amend it to include that the location is at the Upper Common facing Prospect Street.
Okay.
It looks like it's a little confusing if I don't add that to it.
I have a motion...
Second.
And a second to amend 28117 to clarify that it is, that is at the Upper Common facing Prospect Street. Speaking to the motion, all those in...
So clarification. So there are three lanes of traffic there now, one to the right to Mechanic, and two, one I thought takes a loop around Main Street, the other one goes to River Street. So you're saying they both can go to River Street?
Mr. President, can I answer that?
Yes, Counsel Caddy, please do.
So the left lane and the middle lane are both able to continue on Main Street towards River.
Okay.
Except for, nobody knows that. There's no signage indicating that. And so what happens in the Upper Common is that middle lane gets backed up all the way down to Academy, and the left lane is empty. You know, and in fact, you can make that left turn from both lanes, but there's nothing indicating that. It may alleviate a lot of problems in that area.
So, councilors, I know, we'll all want to discuss or clarify. This is simply to amend it. We'll send it to Public Safety. We'll get the chief's report and traffic safety engineers on this as well. So I have a motion and second to amend 28117. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. And...
Will you refer to the Public Safety Committee as a matter of fact?
I have a motion and second to send 28117 to the Public Safety Committee. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. I have a motion and second to adjourn. Speaking to the motion, I'd like to just commend the city clerk's office on a, on a successful election and all of the hard work by the city clerk's office.
[applause]
And all of our poll workers that put in, you know, certainly a long day and give a lot of time and effort to the city. So thank you to them as well. Mayor De Natale?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind the viewing public and the individuals that are here tonight, certainly including the city council, to remind everyone of the special city council meeting next Wednesday, November 15. This is for public, for public consumption, of course, 6:00 PM at the Kent Recital Hall. We're going to be presenting to the public and the council the feasibility study by Lamarrone Pagano for 718 Main Street. And also to let the public know, and whoever may be interested, that the feasibility study copies are on file in the library and the clerk's office if anyone wishes to view those prior to November 15. We're hoping everyone will join us on that, on that day. It's exciting information that we'll be imparting to the public. Thank you.
I have a motion. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Boishman.
I'd like to thank the People Award 2A and 2B for voting for me. It was a very nice room.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. We adjourned. Thank you, councilors.